It says, "Recording in progress."
That's right. Yes, I got the recording started. All right. Oh, people are coming in already. Excellent. I'm gonna go get myself something warm to drink. All right, right back.
Hey, Bill.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, and you?
Good, good, Margaret.
Hey, George. Hi, Lori.
I said hi back, but I was muted, so you couldn't hear me. I'm gonna look at my husband's calling in, so I'm gonna help him real quick.
Okay.
It was a gorgeous day. Did you get to go outside?
It sure was gorgeous, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got outside. I walked for about forty-five minutes or so. Hey, there he is.
How's it going?
Good. How about yourself?
Good.
What a gorgeous day today.
Beautiful. It was beautiful.
As I was telling Lori, Joe, I walked for about forty-five minutes today.
Lucky.
I'm jealous.
Me too.
I went outside when I got in my car to leave work.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wanna make sure. Yes, it turned out to be a beautiful day.
Who is that?
Antoinette.
Who?
Antoinette.
Oh, Antoinette.
Is that Antoinette Ramirez or Hernandez?
Ramirez.
Thank you. I'm trying to write everybody's name now.
Father Ed?
I'm here.
You are here.
Hi, Mark. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. I'm just planning on observing. But I wonder if you could just ask people not to send us emails any longer. They will now be forwarded back to you if we get any emails after tonight. Okay, so if you could just, because we still are receiving emails. We receive about one a day. And so if you could just ask them, again, the group response is what is important. So if there are people who are sending emails to us, we will forward them to you from now on. Okay?
Forward them directly to me?
I can, or I can, Doc is the representative, and usually that's who we would send any, we've only gotten one other email. That was months ago from another parish, and that was referred to the parish representatives, so.
All right, we will.
Super Bowl I was in Los Angeles. That was in nineteen sixty-seven, if you can believe it, and Super Bowl fifty-six will also be in L.A. But Sports Director Vic Schaefer tells us location might be the only similarity between these two games.
Somebody needs to turn off the television.
Yeah, here. Okay.
Hey, Father.
Hey, how's it going, Bill?
Good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to mute people if I hear noise coming out of there.
I made the ultimate sacrifice. I turned my TV off.
That's a good plan.
People who really know me know what a sacrifice that is for me.
How we doing on time? We still got a couple of minutes. A few people are coming in. I appreciate the nice turnout tonight. Appreciate everybody coming in.
Hi there.
Hello.
This is Rita.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
There she is.
Did not forget.
Doc, good to see you.
Joe, I'm here.
Who said that?
Joe.
Hi, Joe. Oh, God bless you, Joe. How are you feeling?
About the same.
We've been praying for you at Mass.
Thank you.
Okay, did you hear me?
Um, yes.
Okay, this one, make sure.
Took the loss in L.A. that day, but that laid the groundwork for winning the Super Bowl IV.
Mike, well, you're back.
All right.
Can you believe that? This is true. The game tanks were erased.
I'm going through muting people, trying to find whose television's on.
Listen, a few years later, the NFL films pieced together most of the game from multiple sources. We're talking about like ten or twelve different places. They had to go around the country. Wow.
Father, you can mute everybody.
There is a way to do that. Yes, there is.
Yeah.
And I was trying not to mute everybody until it was, until everybody was on. We're still adding in here. So this looks like one of those fancy YouTube videos where everybody's singing in harmony.
Early this morning, Jessie Diggins took bronze in the women's cross-country sprint. This is the first ever medal for Team United States.
I think we should all start singing.
Two seconds behind her, she took fourth. That was the only medal so far.
You can ask everyone who's got their own mics, especially if they have a television on.
Yes, if you have a TV on, please. Carol, you know how to mute everybody. How do I mute everybody?
Give your latest Kansas City forecast from TV Rogers.
So it's not under, it's not under participants, and I don't see it under.
Try looking under.
Numbers proceed, Mark Scotty. You can look at that. Nice shot looking out with Kansas Speedway to that down-down Kansas City. Nice evening in progress. You're up the plaza. I hope you're doing fantastic. Fifty-four degrees, only a three mile per hour.
Some of your albums.
All right. Okay, everybody, please mute yourselves, because I am not smart enough to not unmute everybody. We usually use this Zoom for meetings, where we want people to talk, and now I haven't had the situation where we're trying to mute people out. All right. Well, I think a few more people are still going to be coming in, and that's great, but I'll go ahead and open up with some prayer, and then after I pray, we're going to turn it over to John Kenny. John Kenny has been developing the committee that is working to help Guardian Angels overcome some of our past issues, so we can resume our growth momentum that we've been seeing. And then also Doc is going to give us some information about finances as well tonight. So let's begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, we give to you all that we are and all that we have. You have ordained this church through your Son, Jesus Christ, given to the apostles and to the bishops, and we seek only to serve you, Lord. So we give to you, Guardian Angels Parish, and we give to you our future, knowing that our future is in your ever-loving arms and your all-capable hands. We pray your blessing upon this meeting, your grace on all who will be sharing tonight, and we pray especially for your grace on Mark, our consultant, who is meeting with us tonight, that you would give him wisdom as he helps guide us towards our future, and we pray together as our Lord taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
All right, John Kenny, I'm gonna turn this over to you now. You take it from here.
Thanks, Father. Will you hand me the facilitator controls, too?
I think I got screen share control extended. I think you can screen share if you want to.
Okay.
Am I supposed to do something else?
I don't remember how it works. It'd be nice to be able to mute and unmute people as they give feedback.
All right, I can make you the host. How's that?
That's what I'm asking for. Make me the host.
There we go. That works.
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. We can just get a few more people muted real quick, and then we'll unmute as we get to feedback portions. I think that's everyone. Great. Okay, I'll introduce myself. Thank you, Father, for the prayer and for, to you and Doc for putting the second town hall meeting together for us tonight. My name's John Kenny Rodericks. I've been a parishioner at Guardian Angels since 2007. I recognize so many of you. It's great to see such a huge turnout. If you're unfamiliar with Zoom, I'm actually seeing two screens full of people. You'll notice arrows on either side of everybody's pictures, and you can see how many people are here tonight. So a really great turnout. The, oops, somebody wants in. Got it. The you guys all saw me a couple of weeks ago at Mass as we rolled out portions of this plan at that point. A real quick word about housekeeping. The meeting is being recorded. We will review this later so that we can take notes and submit to the consulting team and to Mark per their request, so we'll keep very tight minutes. We'll review the recording to get our minutes, so we don't have anybody actively taking minutes right now or responses. We'll get everybody's responses recorded, though, so don't worry about that. We will take care of it. The other housekeeping, if you want to say anything, please just stick your hand in the air, wave at me. Remember, I can't see everybody at once, so you can also throw a message down of your screen. There's a chat button. You can use the chat button as well. And I think everybody is in who wants to be in. Not, I'll pause again and get more people in. Also, I want to make it clear that I'm not on what's called the Area Planning Committee. I'm here because of the Special Committee for Parishioner Engagement that was started a few weeks ago, and I'll tell you what that committee is. We'll just review what that committee is real quick, and then we'll talk about the proposal and how it affects Guardian Angels. The Special Committee for Parishioner Engagement was born very shortly. Excuse me, I have to let somebody in. Okay. The Special Committee for Parishioner Engagement was born very shortly after this proposal was rolled out, and a lot of the things that the committee is addressing are things that we had already been working on at the pastoral council level, but we had to put it into hyperdrive when this, when this, when this proposed plan came out. The committee is great. It's great. We've got several of them here tonight. There's about thirteen or fourteen of us, and this group really jumped right in. A huge tremendous amount of leadership in the special committee is at play here, and they have our best interests. We all have our best interest at heart, so it's great to be a part of that really cool committee.
You recognize this guy?
Yeah.
Who is he?
I can hear him.
You guys, we've had dinner together at Joe Alvarado's house. Um. Who is this guy? The the proposal is part of a longer-term plan for our diocese. If you have not read the proposal yet, I encourage you to go read it. It is about thirty pages long. There's a link to it on the website, on the homepage of Guardian Angels' website. You can click it and you can read it. It's very informative. The proposal is part of this longer-term vision that has three key priorities, as they're calling it. The first one, they've labeled Healing Our Family. The second one, and I think this is really the big goal of this, is using resources wisely, and the third one is growing God's family. They all play together, but as I read through this and the other information that's available, it's really coming down to resources at this point. One thing that is very important for all of us to remember is that this is a process that seems like it's starting from up high, but really, it's, the empowerment is at the parish level. And when you read through the proposal and some of the other documents that are available to parish leadership, it makes it very clear that this is our time to speak. Mark basically just admitted that he is sick of seeing emails from us. I don't know if that's a sign of defeat or a challenge. We'll leave it and see what happens. But Guardian Angels has spoken up loud and clear that the proposal is not what's best for our parish and our family. This meeting is going to be rooted in positivity and looking forward. People who are on the committee with me know that I'm very good at keeping the meeting on track. We want to hear from everyone, but we also want to stay on topic, so if I feel like things are getting off topic, don't be offended if I steer you back to being on topic. And nothing has been decided yet, guys. This is, the role that we are playing right now is to keep ourselves informed, so please pay attention to bulletins and messages from Father Ed and the parish office, and it's also an opportunity for us to provide our insights and our ideas. This proposed plan is for all the deanery parishes in our deanery and a couple others, and it flows from the data that they've collected. They used data from 2015 to, I believe, 2019. I'd have to get it in front of me again. How is this plan affecting Guardian Angels is a big question that we all have. It's this proposal. I hate to call it a plan because it's not actually in effect yet. But the proposal is clear. Our Lady of Good Counsel would become what's called a Mother Parish, and Guardian Angels would become a Sister Parish. So according to the plan, this is verbatim, a Sister Parish is when two or more parishes are merged. One church is designated, again, verbatim, as the parish or mother church, and the others serve as sister churches. So what this means is that Guardian Angels, as an individual parish, would cease to exist. The building would still be open under much narrower times of usage, but our parish, Guardian Angels, that we know and love, would cease to exist. We would become part of a much larger congregation that would basically be based out of Our Lady of Good Counsel. They worded this very carefully, guys. I, just so you all know, I spent many, many years in the nonprofit world before I opened my real estate brokerage, and I'm very familiar with a lot of these, the language that they're using, and they've sugarcoated it quite a bit. I will be very frank. They have sugarcoated it. The idea of being a Sister Parish means something completely different. This concept of the Sister Parish, I think, has caught a lot of us off guard when we read what it truly meant. We're gonna talk about that more in a second, but I do want to plant that seed right now. Our building would basically become an accessory to Our Lady of Good Counsel, and it would be used one week, one time on Sunday for Mass and once a week for the Mass for the school. So again, literally, Guardian Angels, as we know it, will cease to exist. This proposal was developed from survey responses. The surveys were actually sent out quite some time ago, and one thing that really struck out at me as I was going over all this data that's available is that most parishes had an extremely low response rate. We're talking ten, fifteen responses across the board. We had about that many. I don't remember the specific number. The council had about that many. St. James, I mean, it was universal. One stood out, and that was Oratory of St. Patrick. They had a very high response rate, and that's really what was needed at that point. The sample sizes are so small, though, I don't know how any real plan was, was put together confidently with such a weak amount of feedback from the parishioners that this plan, this proposal, will actually affect. I do not think for a second that our parishioners and other parishioners at other parishes truly understood the gravity of what this questionnaire that came out late last year or earlier this year was actually about. I know that I certainly did not. And there was not a lot of context provided around the questions that that survey was asking. And again, I want to underscore that this was not a unique symptom to Guardian Angels. This happened across the board, and if you're in that report, you can see the numbers of responses that other parishes, as well as ours, provided. It's an interesting contrast to the response, the overwhelming response. Guys, a reminder, so that I can stay focused, if you come into the meeting, please mute yourselves. That way I don't have to take a minute to go find you and mute you. The contrast is the overwhelming response. We've had it in the form of letters to the parish, letters to the consultant, letters to the diocese. The feedback that I had last weekend after Mass, or two weekends ago, after I spoke at all three masses, was overwhelming. I mean, I had people I've never spoken to in my life coming up to me and saying, "We've gotta keep, we've gotta keep our parish open." I have not seen this parish this ignited in a very long time. This is a tremendous response that we have going on here. What I want to do right now is take a moment, and please use the chat box, because we have so many people. I won't be able to see everyone. If you wave your hand, keep waving it. I'll get to you. The I want a few minutes to just do a Q and A over the current proposal plan, not looking into the future yet, but I want to just gauge understanding, gauge your understanding of what's actually happening, and so the best way to do that is let you guys ask questions, but we're not really getting into much feedback or alternatives at this point, so. John, do you have a question? You have to unmute yourself, John Shealy. I saw him waving. There he goes.
My question is, I've heard from friends of mine that live in other parishes that they had everybody fill out the questionnaire. Did we get the questionnaire?
The questionnaire, that's a great question. I will say that no parish has had everybody fill out the questionnaire. And I'll go back to, I'll pull up specifics from our deanery if everybody bears with me for a moment.
Let me interrupt you a minute, John. I'm asking, did we get the questionnaire?
We did. It was, it was, so Doc had a luncheon at the church. I believe that was in December, where he distributed the questionnaire, and then there was also a, it was mentioned at Mass earlier. Doc, remind me when that was. It was mentioned at Mass recently as well, and we had the opportunity to fill out that questionnaire. But what I think was missing, John, goes back to, I think a lot of people didn't understand the importance of that questionnaire, and that's the disparity that we and other parishes are seeing. So yes, the questionnaire was distributed. It was, it was mentioned, and the response rate was low, and I'll go back to saying, no parish had everybody complete the questionnaire. The document itself, the plan itself, let me pull this up. Guardian Angels. Oh, it's not in this one. I'll find the numbers for you, but the responses were pretty consistent, between ten and fifteen responses across most parishes. Far, far too few to make any solid proposals or really put forth any solid plans. There just wasn't enough feedback. If this is supposed to be a bottom-up proposal, to use the words of the consulting team, then there really should have been more solid data adopted pretty early on, John, and just the way it was presented to parishes, I think, didn't underscore the importance of what was actually happening. Does that answer you?
I didn't know there was a questionnaire even available.
I don't think a lot of people did.
I would have filled one out if I'd known about it, but I did not know about it. When I talked to the priest and at the diocese, I was going in with, why didn't we get the questionnaire?
And it's okay that we didn't get it. It's okay that we didn't get it. The, and I'm seeing messages pop up on chat, people saying, "We didn't get the questionnaire." I know it was distributed because there were responses to it. I did not fill one out. I was out of Mass that weekend. I was out sick. John, that was that weekend. I missed taking your place. So I know that I didn't get it. I didn't fill it out, but again, what's important are two things. Most parishes did not. So you might talk to other parishes, but the initial questionnaire, most parishes did not have the opportunity to fill that out on the scale that it needed to be done. The other thing is, is it's okay, because we still have this opportunity to voice our concerns, our alternatives. Hey, Mark, would you say how many in our deanery, you're more familiar with the numbers than I am, and I know that you were just gonna sit back and listen, but don't you think across the deanery were responses pretty low?
The number of people who attended the parish meetings in that first round, that, as you say, varied from parish to parish, and certainly collectively in all three of the deaneries, there were hundreds of people who responded. But again, it really depended upon how much emphasis was placed on the meeting, the promotion of it, et cetera, on the parish level.
Thanks. My question was actually, how, did you see low initial questionnaire response rates across the parishes in the deanery? Am I remembering that correctly?
The again, parishes chose to meet with different groups. Some parish reps met with their councils. Some did a town hall parish meeting, so the response level, as you already mentioned, varied, and it varied too from deanery to deanery, and it depended really to the extent that parishes thought that they would be impacted by, by an eventual plan. So I wouldn't characterize it high or low. I would just characterize it as what we received.
Okay, so I'll just reiterate that I recall- Okay, so I, I'll just reiterate that I recall seeing the responses. What I would describe as low compared to the overall parish population. And, and Mark reiterated what I said in his own way by saying people did not understand the gravity of what was, was happening. And of course, there are variances across parish to parish. I'll get those numbers out to you guys. I think that's important. Um, and if somebody can please, I think there's at least one other person here who can. Jump onto the diocesan website and pull up the surveys and get some response rates because I do want.
I just did, John Kenny, I put it in the chat.
Oh, thank you.
Sure, the numbers are there if you want to take a look.
Here we go. Cathedral, the cathedral, one of the largest parishes, seventeen. Guardian Angels, eleven. St. Patrick, I already mentioned, had a um, just a standout response fifty and they were unique. Good Counsel had five responses. Perpetual Help had eight responses. Sorrows had seven. Sacred Heart did well also with twenty-eight. So some people might not see these as low or high, but I certainly do. And I think when I'm seeing the cathedral have seventeen and we're just shy by them by six, you know, eleven here at Guardian Angels. That tells me that we did the right things early on as we were instructed by the diocese. What was missing was what the survey actually, the weight behind the survey was carrying. And, and I think that's why we had response rates that were uh, not um. That's what I'm looking for, that we're just, just not in, not proportionate to, to the, to the. Reaction that we've seen more recently now that we've had time to read the proposal, um, and also um. To the number of parishioners at these parishes. So we had some very large parishes with way more parishioners than we have had similar response rates, John. Does that help you understand a little bit better?
Yes, it does.
Great, awesome.
I wish somebody from the, from the diocesan board that were putting this together would have come out and explained it, but. That's just the way I would have done it.
And, and, and like I said, it's okay that, that it didn't happen. This is our, this is our chance to set the record straight and that's why we're here tonight. So we're going to set the record straight tonight and we're going to keep doing what we've been doing over the past couple of weeks. Are there other questions about the proposal or the data that I just shared with you and talked about? And Mark, also thank you for answering that question. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you. Who is it? Tracy, just on.
Okay, can you hear?
Yeah, go for it.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, great. Uh, I'm in my car and I have to leave soon. My husband has a concert tonight. Um, so first, will there be any way to watch the rest of this meeting, um, since it's being recorded?
I don't see why not. I, I am happy to upload it. I think we should probably just upload it. To the YouTube channel and give people the link who want to watch it. As an unlisted video, so.
Yeah, that, that would. That would be great. Um, I, I would really appreciate that. As I said, um. Any word on the priest situation? You said that, you know, if this plan would go, the proposal would go through, we'd have only. One mass, um, any, any word on who the priest would be?
Um, Father Ed might be better equipped to handle that um. Question. I know that Father Ed, I know a big question we've had. Uh, and I asked Father Ed point blank earlier today. I said, Father, I need, I need an answer, um, is what would happen to Father Ed? If, if this proposal turns into.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
Exactly.
Father Ed will be okay. They're not going to ship him off to another diocese at this point, um, because, uh, because of his unique relationship with two dioceses. Uh, the Ordinaria Diocese and, and our local diocese. Um, a lot of people were worried about that and. Um, but he told me quite confidently that, that he would be here in Kansas City for quite some time. So. Thankfully.
Now, if I address the issue of who would be saying mass at Guardian Angels. Under the current proposal, that would be determined by a good counsel. Uh, Father Adam Johnson is the current pastor. I don't know what's going to happen in June and everybody shifts, but it would be up to the pastor. At Good Counsel to assign a priest to say mass at uh, Guardian Angels.
And that's some of the stuff that we'd be giving up under the current proposal. Not that we had much of a choice before, but. Uh, when you, when, uh, right now our voices are loud and strong because of the size of our parish. And even when we were a much bigger parish, we had very loud, loud, strong voices. Um, but melding into this bigger pot really is going to take away a lot of the personality that we've come to know and love. The, 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 just like I shared at mass a few weeks ago, how Guardian Angels saved me from leaving the church. I don't know if you all hold my story. I'm not going to tell the whole thing again, but I'm not exaggerating. I was ready to stop being Catholic. Until the day I walked into Guardian Angels Church and I wept when I read that proposal. We were driving down the road and my spouse was reading it to me. On, on, on their phone and I had to pull over and read it for myself and it was just heartbreaking. I was crushed. I mean, my arms got heavy. I, I cried on the rest of my drive and I know I'm not the only one and it's okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Tracy. Those are great questions. Any other questions from anybody about the current proposal? Let me look.
Hey, John Kenny, this is Laura Beener. Um, I put a question in the chat.
Thank you.
But I was just curious if there's going to be a second opportunity to fill out that questionnaire. Or if that's even relevant at this point and we just focus on our response to the proposal.
That, I think, and, and this is, this is where we're at in the process. So I, 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 I'd like to imagine that we're not the only parish who is trying to regroup after this, this shock that we received. But yes, the, the process was pretty, pretty clear. This initial survey that nobody really understood and now we're here. So this is our chance to regroup. Mark wants to jump in. Unmute yourself.
Mark, I guess to unmute.
I just want to clarify the process. The, if you look at the, the possibilities for vibrant ministry, which is being referred to as the questionnaire. Um, that helps form the basis for ministries. Uh, that will be part of the plan, eventual plan. Right now, the major focus is on organization, how, what, what possibly. Uh, would be ways that we can organize parishes in each of the three deaneries that we're working with. In order to allow them to thrive. And at this point, um, parishes are being invited to respond to the initial proposal. And so what we're going to focus on is to try to get a, a proposal that people will accept. And then the next step will be pastors and the uh, area planning team representatives. From the parishes that may be grouped or working together, they will work up the details now of what that plan is going to look like. And of course, that, uh, those possibilities that we, we asked for some feedback. Those will be helpful in terms of the ministries that will make up. Uh, the, the, the various parts of the ministry plan uh, for, for that organization as well.
Okay, thank you, Mark. That's helpful. It sounds like, I mean, we still have the opportunity to. Share what it means to us and where we want this to go. So that's all I wanted to make sure we had that. And it sounds like, you know, it's too bad that maybe we didn't have the full picture at the time the questionnaire came out, but. That's in the past. So now we focus on what we can do going forward.
Yeah, and that's what starts now tonight is, is here's our response, basically. So. And we're going to formulate it. We're going to go through the process that the, that the consultant company has laid out for us. Um, I'm giving you some background information. I am going to pick up the pace a little bit because this is supposed to go no longer than ninety minutes and we're already forty-five minutes into it. Oh, sorry, we're half an hour into it. My apologies. We started at six fifteen. So any other questions before I move on, just about the current plan, the process?
I think Margaret Lima has a question.
Yes, Margaret.
Um, yeah, I just wondered, since one of these things that number two is the financial stability of the parish. Do we have a clear picture as to what Guardian Angels financial stability is right now?
Doc is going to give us an update.
Okay.
Three, three bullet points down from where I'm at right now.
Okay.
So Doc is here and he's going to give us an update. Um. Jim Torres asked a question. I think good counsel would be a better fit for Our Lady of Perpetual Help. Um, so this is a done deal. I want to reiterate that, that this is not a done deal, that this is a proposal. And that this is our opportunity to basically counter that proposal, offer alternatives and. Lay out our case and I think we've got a good solid case in front of us, guys. I really do. And, and so that was a great question, Jim. I don't see any other questions in the chat. I'm going to move on. Let me make sure nobody else is waving at me. Who's, who is phone number ending in four zero five three? Did you have a question?
I just joined your meeting. This is Paul Hilber.
Okay, alright. Thanks for coming, Paul. Um, let's get back on track here. So, great questions, everyone. What is Guardian Angels doing about it? And, and I, and just like at mass a few weeks ago and also for Mark's benefit, I do want to talk about where we've been. Over the past several years, starting in twenty fifteen, when Margaret Lima retired after a very uh, long career. She very much deserved to retire at that point and we effectively ended our, our relationship with the Jesuits at that point. So we lost our Jesuit priest, Father Bob at that point. And that's where things really started getting rocky for us. We had over five hundred families uh, at the time. Um, we were also, I mentioned, uh, that we were bringing in between seven and ten thousand dollars a week at the time. Um, it started to dip a little bit before then, um, but, but very, very strong collections of very financially stable parish. Um, and then we had multiple changes in leadership. Uh, over the course of five years, a reminder that if you are here, please mute yourself. I'm not going to come hunting for you. Um, very frequent turnovers in leadership. Under one particular leader, guys, our parish under one priest lost half of its registered families in a year. We dropped from over five hundred families to two hundred and sixty families. I'm not going to say names, but one guess, right? And, and it was very divisive and it was dark and it was not a good fit. And at this point, having been through the leadership that I've been through, Paul, stay muted, please. Being through the leadership experience that I've been through in the nonprofit world. I have to wonder at this point, what was actually the goal of all of those turnovers? It felt like there was some sort of external force really pushing us back for years. We had toxic staff in the office because they didn't have effective leadership. We had very tragic things happen to, between staff and the parish. That had nothing to do with who we are as a parish and nothing to do with our current parish leadership. The, the, the frequent changes in leadership and inconsistency and, and, you know, we had, we had. Administrators and, and, and deacons and, you know, certain people saying things like, well, if you want a festival, somebody's going to have to do it. No, that's not leadership. It's not. Leadership means doing what we're doing now, which is stepping up and somebody's got to fill that gap. We had a leadership vacuum and then Father Ed came in twenty nineteen and that was our lifeline. But bless his heart, he has not even had a chance to lead. We keep going back to this. We shut down seven months after he got here. The world changed. We all know that. We all lived through it. But just as we were getting to know him and finding out how much we loved him and loved that, by the way. I want to share with all of you, the biggest piece of feedback I received, other than we love Father Ed, is that we love that he is married. I heard that from so many parishioners that we love having a married priest. It puts things in a new perspective. And I want to share that I feel strongly that you can see the love that he has for his own family. Really shine through in his love for us. And it's, it's been really cool to see that as a lifelong Catholic, to see that, that new, that new take on a priest. Because it certainly is, is unexpected. Um, but we feel strongly that, that he deserves a chance to lead. So the, the, and we're just now getting to that point. So that's where we've been. That's where we're at. And there's a two-pronged approach that we're taking right now. And the first one is an alternative plan that Father Ed has laid out. Father Ed, do you want to talk about the alternatives or do you want me to do it?
Okay, I'll, I'll briefly touch on it and then you can add, uh, add whatever you wish, but. Um, basically my alternative plan is I understand the diocese needs to um. Start trimming back in terms of a number of masses and, and staffs. And so my, my, um, my alternative plan was for uh, Guardian Angels to. Was to take on a, a second parish. Where we, I could say masses of both at Guardian Angels and at a second parish. They could look at ways to um, combine staffs so that we can reduce the staff burden of the two parishes. Um, or even three parishes, if, if that's what comes to pass. But there are a number of parishes that are looking either being absorbed. Or, uh, merged. Um, and I think that uh, we can make a, a stark difference there. You know, I, I, I was not, you guys know I'm not a cradle Catholic. I come from an evangelical background and I believe in church growth. Guardian Angels has been growing. We added five new members last Sunday. We added six the weekend before that. Our, we added over fifty new families last year. We are continuing to, to grow the parish. I think that we can replicate that in other parishes. Um, but I do understand the diocese needs to, uh, to trim. Uh, to, to greater utilize their priests, to trim some staffs, to possibly trim some masses. And we'll probably be affected by the end of this. We want to be affected in a way that allows us to continue uh, to grow. And even to export a spirit of evangelization into other parishes in the area. I'll take it back to you, John Kenny.
Thank you, Father. That was pretty great. Um, the um, one thing that Father didn't mention is that. Half of the new families that we've registered lately have joined during the pandemic. So the messaging that's coming out. In the homilies, the welcoming, the, the welcome, welcoming atmosphere that we've always loved about our parish is working. And, and evangelization is a big goal for the, for the church. I mean, this is coming down from Rome. We've been hearing it for years. Evangelize the church, evangelize the church, evangelize the church, and we are witnessing it happen in real time at Guardian Angels. And we value that at Guardian Angels and we are being successful at it at Guardian Angels, right? So this is our opportunity. We've got to show them how we're shining. So that's the first prong. Father Ed, that the entire parish office has this united front. They're out networking. They're talking to, to neighboring. Parishes, they're getting feedback from the, the, the leadership at those parishes. And this is important and they're focusing on growing the parish, which is exactly what they should be doing. Where things really shifted, to recap, during the pandemic was a massive drop in parish engagement. Compounded by those issues that I mentioned earlier that started basically in early twenty sixteen. The, and that's how the special committee for pastor or for parish, parishioner engagement was born. Like, how do we revitalize and get people back into church? Let's welcome them back. Let's officially just reopen. Let's get all of our ministries full. So that if you remember, if you were at mass last weekend, we identified four action points for every single parishioner. The first one, of course, is pray. Pray for our parish. Pray for ourselves as parishioners. Pray for Father Ed. Pray for wisdom and grace for the consulting team, the bishop and all the people who are surrounding parishes, like just pray, pray, pray. That's step one and it's important. The second one we talked about was sharing. Share your stories about Guardian Angels. Share them on Facebook. Joe Alvarado had a great post on Facebook. Uh, earlier this week about why Guardian Angels is important to her. Jump on Face, Facebook, use the hashtag. Come home to G A K C. Uh, I've noticed some parishioners starting to use that hashtag. But we're really going to adopt it and start telling our story again and getting the word out into the greater community. The third one was volunteering and this was the first thing that the special committee tackled. If you remember last week, we sent out, uh, we, we sent out on Facebook, uh, by email. Uh, in person at mass, time and talent forms and the response was tremendous. I am happy to say that I spent about an hour and a half today putting in thirty, almost thirty new volunteers for this parish. Some of them stepping into roles that they stopped doing when the pandemic started. But a lot of new parishioners, guys, and not just one person saying, hey, I'll be a lecturer. I had people saying, I, I've been a lecturer before. I want to do that again, but I'm interested in becoming a minute, a, a extraordinary minister of the. Most holy Eucharist, or I want to work with homebound parishioners, or I want to uh, be an usher. I'm interested in helping with, with the big parish events like the festival and, you know, whatever shakes out over the next several months. So that aspect has been tremendously empowering to see in real time that the hard work that the committee has put in is already showing up. And um, we're still working through them. We're reaching out to everybody who, who filled those out. But volunteer growth, that was, that was the big one. And then the next one, the fourth one was increasing giving and we have seen those increases on weekly contributions start. It's not as widespread yet, um, but it will. And, and that's the next big task. That the, the uh, special. But it will, and, and that's the next big task that the, the special committee for parishioner engagement is tackling. I'm going to go over a few other high-level stats to share with you. There, I just mentioned the volunteer growth. The giving potential has increased. We've, Father mentioned, we added four new families the weekend I spoke, or excuse me, four new families this past weekend, six new families the week before. We had 43 baptisms in 2021. And I'm scrolling through the data, and I don't see any other parish that did 43 baptisms in 2021. It's not part of the data that they collected because their data stops in 2020. I mentioned the hashtag come home to G A K C. Use that on social media, please. Tag the church in your posts. We're looking at ways of modernizing how we give. So we have, you know, of course, good old fashioned write a check or drop a few bills in the, in the basket. We have automatic payments. We're reaching out to people individually about increasing their automatic payments because that's something that just gets set on autopilot and forgotten. Also, I mentioned the dip jar at Mass, and it was delayed because of all that bad weather over on the east coast. Bad weather here, but our dip jar got here today, guys, and I'm so excited about it. Here it is. It's not very big. But this is the one I told you, we're just going to have it at the back, and it'll be set to 20 bucks, and people can just take their card and it goes boop. And that's it. The device does not hold any personal data. It immediately transmits it over the very secure 5G network. Boop, done. All encrypted, all safe, and then we get a disbursement. And if you want to do 40, you dip twice. 60, you dip three times. So it's here. You'll see this. This is an incredibly powerful tool. I'm thrilled that, that it finally got here. I was starting to feel stressed about it. So four, four goals to pressure engagement. Pray, share, give, volunteer. This is working. It's taking off. And then Doc is going to spend a few minutes for a financial update. And then we are going to jump into some real feedback about all of this stuff, more than what we just did with, with a short Q and A session. So Doc, you're up.
Thank you, J K, for the articulation and all you do for Guardian Angels. For those that don't know who I am, I am the, more or less the business manager at Guardian Angels right now, along with many other hats. We, at Guardian Angels, let, let me make it very clear that I am part of this community. I only live about five minutes walking to Guardian Angels. So I consider myself a parishioner first and an employee second. Now, with that said, I just want to go over some of the financials. It looks like somebody sent out a chat asking us, do we have a Venmo account? Yes, we do. And Guardian, and G, yeah, Lord Joseph's, yes, we have the link in every bulletin. So yes, to answer that question. Now, going back to the financials. Okay, so first, first and foremost, I want to preface this with, you know, even politicians get four years to turn things around, right? Until you can vote again. And Father Ed's only been at Guardian Angels for about two years now, and we got hit with COVID as J K articulated so greatly. So in reality, I'm thinking maybe one year, maybe one and a half. But with that said, I'd like to have the financials for the last five years, our P and Ls. And I am actually seeing a turnaround from this 2020, 2021, our fiscal year starts in July 1st, year-to-date. And for the first time in five years, without us having to sell any property, Guardian Angels is in the black. Okay, we, we're not in the red. We're in the black. And this is due to year-end contributions as well as some new parishioners, as J K and Father Ed was talking about previously. And as of today, I ran the P and Ls today. I'm not going to bore you with all these numbers because it's quite an extensive spreadsheet. But I ran the P and L today, and I liked that the amount of money that we're giving to the diocese compared to last year now. I, I haven't been in Guardian, at Guardian Angels as an employee for, I started, I think, in March or April, April, full-time. So this is way before my time. So I can't take the blame or the credit. But if you look at our P and L year-to-date compared to last year's year-to-date, we paid over $96,000 to the diocese compared to last year's, we only paid, I think, 34, $36,000. So that speaks volumes as far as our income and our revenues, and I'm seeing it grow on a weekly basis. And it's going to continue to grow as our ministry grows. And our community embraces Guardian Angels. We, we serve so many people in the food pantry. So with that said, at a very high level, you know, to me, it would be a shame to close us down after only giving Father Ed and, and everybody a year and a half to turn this Titanic around. And we had a lot of uphill battles. I mean, these, the, the hills that we're running, they're not hills, they're mountains. When I, my first day at Guardian Angels, I remember looking at the P and L and I go, holy crap, Father. I said, what's going on? You know, I, I mean, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that we, that we've been losing. And as you all know, we sold Papa John's to recoup someone, to pay off someone's bills, but but we don't have any more properties to sell. So within the last year since I've been here, all of the revenue that we've been making have been coming from contributions and and the growth of our parish. And I see that growth firsthand at 11 o'clock mass every Sunday. So I'm going to open up to any questions that you may have, but to me, it would be, excuse my language, but a damn shame to close us right now. We're on an upward trajectory. And it's not just the numbers that are proving it. J K articulated that with the amount of parishioners we're receiving, new, new cards that we're receiving from new parishioners as well as baptisms. So, I mean, all, all of those numbers, all those metrics are pointing toward growth. I don't see any metric that says that we're in a decline and it's not sustainable. So, okay, I'm going to open up the chat to anybody that's got questions. And just wave your hand. There's two pages. 34 people. That's a lot of people.
There, there are two main indicators of the success of a nonprofit. Again, going on 15 years of nonprofit experience here, guys, at the Y M C of Greater Kansas City, two main indicators of success. Number one is primary, number two is secondary, and they're probably reversed of what you'd expect. Number one is volunteerism. And we've got the volunteers in place, and that's growing. Number two is money coming in the door. The reason those are probably reversed is because you'd expect money to be king, and it usually is. But you're not going to get the cash in if you don't have the volunteer base to, to, to rally the crowd. So what Doc is saying about increasing and, and money coming in, and I'm talking about increasing in volunteerism, these are indicators of strength and power and upward trajectory. Sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to throw.
I don't see any questions from anybody.
I think John Shealy has a question.
Okay, John, go ahead. Yes, sir.
John, I want to contradict the history of the parish. I'm not going to take long here. I can go back to Monsignor Strasburger. Father Monsignor Walton, Father Solly, Father Glenn Miller was, I mean, for most of us here, he was the most impressive, and then Margaret Lima. They all had a plan. They all lifted the, the parish. They all lifted the leadership role. One place that hasn't worked with this has been that diocese and office. They closed our school for four or five years, nine years, whatever it was, then bought it back. They never came out and explained to us anything about that. They sold the QuickTrip, the gas station. Didn't, Parish Council, I don't even think knew about that. I, I don't think we get much support from the diocese. The Anglican joined our parish. Nobody from the diocese explained why, why are we doing this, or even what it is. We, we had no concept of what it was till Father Ed began explaining it. But I don't think we have much support from them people down at what used to be 32nd McGee. I've never been downtown at their office. I don't even know where it is. The old Board of Trade building, but I, I don't think they have much understanding of even what, who we are or what we do. We're a small parish, and that's all they know about it.
Yeah, thank you, John, for the clarification. What J K and I, as well as Father, were, what we wanted to make clear is that, you know, yeah, the, the work that was done previously was phenomenal. We just had some rough patches of water within the last several years. And Margaret was a phenomenal business manager. She's a better business manager than I could ever dream of. So I just want to make that very clear that this is not a knock on anybody in the past. We, we're just stating the facts and what we've been through and where we're going.
And, and John, you said something important that made me think of something I didn't talk about. One of the things that this study claims to have looked at was the condition of facilities, and this is where prior leadership does get a huge amount, particularly Margaret Lima and, and our priest of credit. Our building is in great shape. I remember standing in the north parking lot with Margaret Lima and a roofer one day. I'm not sure why I was there. And the roofer said, the felt looks like it was just laid, right? I stupidly asked, how, when was the felt laid? And Margaret Lima looked at me like I had four heads and said 1922, when they built the church. You know, the felt was in great shape. We had some roof damage over the altar a few, few years ago from some wind. That's been fixed. Also, we are fully handicap accessible, disabled accessible, and that was part of the 2007 renovation, when the parish was able to raise over a million dollars to beautifully renovate our church with no new debt to the parish and install an elevator so that parishioners who rely on wheelchairs or have mobility issues can get from the, the main level to the parish hall. We also, I don't know how many parishes have this, but we have two full solar arrays on the building of our, on the roof of our school building. So we are efficiently powered well into the 21st century. It was pretty groundbreaking at the time we got them. One array helps power the school. One array helps power the church. And they are on, they are functioning, and we are very lucky to have those. That also happened under Margaret Lima's leadership. The school building, as you all know, if you went to school there, if you've been inside of it, is built to take a bomb hit. It was built during the Cold War. It looks like it. It feels like it. And there was a massive investment into that building when the school moved back. So not only do we have all of these moving pieces that the consultants are looking at in terms of human resources, but we have very valuable and, and strong physical resources. The physical plant of our parish is just there, like it's solid. We also have very high visibility because of our location. Before we go on to general comments, I, I'm a real estate agent, so I love real estate data. And I have a tool called CoStar. It's a commercial MLS, basically, and I can pull traffic counts. And, and just before the meeting started, something clicked and said, pull traffic counts. So I pulled Guardian Angels traffic count. This is just on Westport Road. I went pre-pandemic because we know traffic dropped, and the most recent data is height of the pandemic, basically. So Westport Road at the nearest data collection point, which was down by Genesee, 24,000 vehicles a day drive by our church, 24,000 vehicles a day. And I know before the pandemic started, we were looking at getting better signage out front, and that got paused, and it's still going to be on pause for a moment. But better signage out front would communicate even better than what we are able to do. Redemptorist, believe it or not, now, keep in mind, I'm only pulling Broadway's traffics, not Linwood's traffic, but Broadway's traffic at Linwood just shy of 20,000. So we're beating redemptorist. Our Lady of Good Counsel, there's no data point because it sits so far back from the thoroughfare. So its nearest data point is Broadway South at 39th Terrace. So south of 39th Street, over there by the old coffee house, now, the old fire station, the old Westport Fire Station. That one only gets 18,000, and you can't even see the church from that point. So in terms of visibility and facilities and condition of facilities, our attic, not very many of you have been in the attic of the church. I've had the pleasure fully insulated with expandable foam insulation. We're energy efficient. The windows were all rebuilt. We're in fine shape. So we've got a lot of assets going for us. And I'm going to stop talking so much.
I can just jump in here for a second. Thank you for all the credit that you give me, but it wasn't easily happening without pastoral council and out the finance council and all the other people that were interested in putting in their time and energy and talent to doing that, especially the finance council and the pastoral council. Part of that success, I think, was due to the fact that we had training sessions for people, and people who were interested in serving in those capacities kind of learned what it was to be church and how to interact and, you know, get other people involved. And so that would be one thing I think, you know, we still need to kind of work on because that also stopped after I passed on. But it, you know, that increased volunteerism is really key, I think, to a lot of this stuff working out.
Margaret, Deborah, thank you for saying that, because I will tell you, as a longtime parishioner, I think the process that we were encouraged to go to and through of discernment truly helped us understand, because there were many of those that had time and talent, but had never been to a meeting to understand that everybody gets a fair speak. There are no bad ideas. And when I mentioned when change happened recently about having to people go through discernment, it was, well, I don't know that that's really necessary. Let's just pick these people. And I have found in the last year and a half, when all these changes have been going on, that as a person that went through that process and clearly understood on both the finance and pastoral council that that is something that is strongly needed, because there are people that have talent but just don't understand the process. So I thank you for starting that. I thank you for not making us, but encouraging us to go through those things. And I think it is something that needs to be done currently.
John, if I could intervene here. Hi Veronica, good evening, everyone. I think that, you know, I think the silver lining here is that the church at one point had to readjust and reinvigorate certain processings, right? Like the way people donate, the way people sign up to volunteer, the way discernment occurs. So I think it's a, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity to rethink how we're doing those things and, and adapt them to, to, you know, the parishioners visiting now or the, the, the way we're, we're headed to grow. So when, when I think of what contributions I can make or how I can help, I can certainly help in brainstorming how to quote unquote, improve the user experience so that there are less barriers for participation for, for parishioners or for, for new, new, new guests. And so I just wanted to say that out loud, that that's where I can, I can support, including with the QR codes at the back of the view. So just let me know.
Thank you. The, Deborah, that you, you could not have said that better. Deborah, thank you for saying that. I know that, that there have been a lot of changes, and, and I think discernment was one piece that was, was missing. And, and we have Margaret's legacy to, to fall back on. Thankfully, a lot of us remember what it was like. I want to shift directions a little bit. This is great feedback, Veronica. Thank you for sharing. But the, the purpose of, of this portion of the town hall meeting is to get I want to hear things like what Veronica just said in the construct of our special committee, right? Because that's the purpose of that special committee is to, and what Deborah just said, and there was on that special committee, thankfully, to revamp, as we continue to revamp our volunteerism and our, and our, our, our tithing, our fiscal contributions. As we go through that process, what does it look like? Do we have an onboarding for new parishioners? All of those are great suggestions, great thoughts, but this portion of the meeting is specifically for feedback, questions, comments, information, like just ideas, like what can we do differently? We know that something is going to have to change, like Father said. We know that the diocese and particularly this deanery can't keep functioning the way it's been functioning. But we also know that we do not like the plan that's been laid out, and we don't deserve the plan that's been laid out. We're better than that plan. We deserve more than that plan. So I need to hear from you guys what you think of that plan, pluses, minuses of the current proposal, based on what I said earlier. All your ideas, all your questions, go for it. And, and, and just, you know, share whatever. I'm, we're here to listen and, and take notes. And this is our opportunity to we didn't get to do the surveys early on, only 11 of us did. This is your opportunity. Somebody said earlier, is it too late? No, because this is what we're doing right now. We're giving our feedback right now. And just unmute yourself and start.
Okay, I'll jump in again. One of the things I have a question about is that evangelization was one of the two things that they said was pushing this whole process stuff. And so I think there needs to be a clearer explanation, helping people to, what they mean by evangelization, and to somehow help parishes, ours included, to broaden our vision of how could we work. What they mean by evangelization and to somehow help parishes, ours included, to broaden our vision of how could we work together. Within the deanery or within the, I guess if it's three parishes or five parishes or whatever, you know, what would, what would it look like to be able to share? Um, resources, because I don't think there's a real clear picture of that, at least not in my mind.
I'd like to find out, um, if we joined Our Lady of Good Council Parish. Would we have any way to speak to what we would like to do going to church there? Compared to the ultra-conservative group they've had there since nineteen twenty-three?
So, John, we, we, we would. So the, the, the proposal. When you become a sister parish, which means, as we talked about, GA ceases to exist, and there's this really big Our Lady of Good Council. There would be an entirely new pastoral council formed, an entirely new finance council formed. There might be people from both. Or all three, however, and churches fall under this. That were on previous councils. I don't know how that would work, but that's, that's part of that coordination as we go through the, through the process. Also, there would still be. Under the proposal, one mass a week at Guardian Angels, and the sincere hope is that it would, would match our more contemporary worship style. That we have, that we have at, at our parish compared to the very traditional worship style that they have. At Good Council. And then to answer, Margaret asked a really big question. I don't, I don't have an answer to Margaret's question. Um. I don't, I don't, I think that the evangelization of the Catholic Church is something that's frequently mystified us as Catholics and seems like something that priests should be doing. But I also think that Father Ed summed it up nicely when he said, we're, you know, we're, we are evangelizing. We're getting the word out, we're getting the, the, the gospel out through his homilies on YouTube, through us talking to other people who aren't parishioners. They're coming, they're joining. Because we're talking about what we have, we're talking about who we are, and, and that is the evangelization we're seeing at our church. But in terms of that big picture that, that Margaret asked, I don't, I don't know. Maybe somebody else does, somebody smarter than me. Which isn't hard.
John, um, from what you just mentioned of all the things you're, so. Good, the good things here, here, right, is things are going well as far as our growth, as far as our engagement. So from your point of view, or from anyone more involved than me, certainly, um. Of the things that are going well, what are the components that are still missing to elevate what's already going well? Because that'll help me figure out the, like, that'll help me ideate.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Um, the things that are going well are going well. Because I, I think a lot of us didn't realize that we had a problem at first, right? And, and I think that even includes. Um, our leadership, and that's okay. The reason I say that's okay is because we're not looking. It's different. When you, when you're in this situation, you have to step out and look in, and that's what this is forcing us to do. It's forcing us to step out and look at ourselves from a different direction, and when you're inside. Only looking out and, and sometimes looking in, you might not notice. Some failures, you know, or, or that there's an issue. We didn't know that there were any problems to address. We knew that we had to increase volunteerism. Uh, but that was something that the pastoral council started talking about, and it was like a slow burn process. This has pumped us in the hyperdrive. The things that aren't going well at this point, I think, are, um, I'm thrilled with volunteer aspect of it. I know that, that once the special committee really gets going on, talking to people about personally inviting them to increase their contributions. And all of that, we will see money start coming in substantially more. I, I've been through that process with several nonprofits before. I'm confident in that. I'm not concerned about that. The things that aren't going well, I think that there's still a lot of confusion, and I think that that's reflected by. The quiet voices from what's normally a very active group of people. I'm seeing, I mean, I recognize almost everybody here, and none of you are shy. So, um, I think that there's an indication that maybe there's still some confusion about what's happening to us. Maybe there's some grief. You know, I know that I, I told you, I went through a grieving process at first, the whole gamut. I, I denied it. I got angry. I still have not accepted it. I've tried bargaining with God. I've begged for a weeping statue to get people in the door. You know, whatever it takes, but I think that we're all going through that process still, and I don't know how to fix that aspect of it, other than things like this.
I also think that that could be, you know, people, I mean, it's a discouraging time in space, in history right now. So this is like a downer already on things that are, you know, not, not so great lately. So I, I mean, I think in approaches that we, we have to build the voice of hope, right? We, we have to just say, that's not an option. That's simply not an option for us, um, and, and really profess that in a way that those that are in doubt or unsure can believe it. So I don't know if this means like. Activities or, or a way to get, it would be great to get some kids to do artwork or anything that's encouraging, that can just. Could continue to build the spirit of, of the community. Um, just throwing that idea out there, but anything we can do to. Some people may not have the space and time right now to feel like they have the fighting spirit in them, right? And I feel like we have a great opportunity to inspire that fight. If they've given up in other places, this is a space where. We are united to succeed, and I think that could be very rewarding to families and, and people right now.
It is a very difficult time. It absolutely is. We're exhausted. We're exhausted. That's, that's another thing that's hard, Veronica, is that. You know, when, when, when I started the special committee, at first, it was like something, I will, I'll be very honest with you. It, it felt like something I had to do, that there was no choice. I don't regret it. I love what's happened out of it, but at first I was like, ah, life is drudgery right now. You know, it is, it is, but I keep thinking about how good I feel after I go to mass there, you know, and I've been to mass a few other places. During the pandemic, and it's, I don't walk away with the same feeling, you know, I don't, I don't get that, that, that vibe that we have. It's so unique what we have. It's pretty brilliant. Who else?
Question.
Yeah, I would, I had a question also about the, uh, the schools. Is the, uh, can you clarify what the relationship is of the parish to the school? And also, does already a good council have a school as well?
No, they don't, and I'll give you a very high level. Uh, the, the school building is part of the parish. Um, we do get some rental income from the group that uses the gym of the building. Um, when the schools were consolidated and it moved over there to redemptorist, um, and then they moved it back to our building. Um, the surrounding parishes contribute a certain dollar amount to the school. The school as an entity, I'm not talking about the building. The school as an entity, a business group is separate from the parish, but we do have a very strong relationship with them. Father Ed is, uh, their chaplain at the school. Of course, we say mass, and I don't care. If the business entity is part of, of our business entity or not, it's our school. It's always been our school. They're right there. I love driving by on my way home. Uh, and seeing, you know, the kids out back playing. It's just, it's, it's part of a good thriving parish, and we're extremely lucky to have it. We're extremely lucky to have it there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Unmute yourself. I see you waving. Unmute yourself.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Uh, hi, it's just Noel. I have a lot of things I'd like to say, but, but one timely thing is that this Sunday. Um, we are having the women's ministry meet, and, uh, Jo Alvarado is leading that, but she is ill right now. And, uh, I think Rita and I may be trying to, uh, hold that together. I just want to encourage everyone who's online here. Right now, um, all the women here to come to that meeting, even if it's only for fifteen, twenty minutes. I know it's Super Bowl Sunday and all those things, but, uh, if we just keep pushing back the startup of our women's ministry. Uh, we won't get it very invigorated. Uh, we need to do that very quickly, and I think at the last meeting we had. I saw new people, new energy, and, uh, they, believe me, the old guard, if you will, is very ready. To step back and support, uh, new energy with the women's ministry. I think that's going to be vital to us moving forward. So let's put it i- in every media that we can, let's put forth in the next few days. That we get attendance at this women's ministry on Sunday. Thank you.
Bear with me. Thank you for sharing that. You will be impressed by the number of women of all ages who expressed interest to be a member of the women's ministry on the Time and Talent surveys. Noel, I will get that information to you. We're, like I said, we're still compiling it, but I will have a list of, of women with contact information. And I will get it to you by the end of this week. I'll, I'll actually, I'll make it a priority so they have time to plan for Sunday.
Send it to Joe also.
Okay, I'll get your email addresses later, okay?
Okay.
I have those, so I'll send it to Joe. Okay.
All right.
Um, but just remind everyone, that's, that's, this is great to share like this, but I really, we've got to push back on the proposal. We've got to impress Mark. And we've got to scare Mark a little bit, and that's okay. So we've got it, we've got to show Mark what we're made of, guys. So talk about how you feel about the proposal. Not the nitty-gritty stuff, not, not this committee or this, we need to focus on, on this, the point of this Q and A session, comment session right now. Is for him to get your feedback. This is your chance. If you didn't do the questionnaire several months ago, this is your chance, so.
Yeah, John Kenny, I have a question, and Mark, I'm actually going to direct this to you.
His hand anyway, so ask your question, then Mark can talk.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Mark. I'll be quick. Um, this might be along the lines of what Veronica was saying, which you expressed really beautifully. Um, but I'm just curious, so, okay, clearly, we want to keep our parish open. I think that's evident by the response here and what you're seeing. We shared the financial situation, that looks good. Is there anything else that you can share with us about the criteria? That we're being measured against and what it is that you're looking for as a consultancy to assess whether a parish is. Healthy or, like you said, fit for vibrant ministry. I mean, what are the other criteria? Because I think that that would help a lot of us. We talked about. Discerning where we can each individually contribute to improve the situation. I think it would just help to know. What it is specifically you're looking at so that we can make sure we're prioritizing and focusing on the right areas.
That is an excellent question.
Sure, the, the, uh, the, 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 the principle metrics that we are looking at is parish data points. And there, there are some criteria in the plan, one of, there, you, you can find them. I think it's on page four, page four or five, there are criteria that, that have been used. Um, the, uh, kind of a rule of thumb that I've, I've talked with the area planning team also. Our planning committee is, um. Parishes that are under three hundred households, uh, tend to be. Vulnerable to a lot of change. The, there, there, uh, they just simply don't have the resources to be able to hire staff to help with ministry. Uh, and so, uh, again, you, you can see the criteria that, that are present in, in the plan itself. That, that were used. The, the other, the point that I had raised my hand about is what is really helpful. To the area planning committee and also to the diocesan leadership team is to give us some alternative. What, what are you thinking? If you, if you don't like the idea of merging with Our Lady of. Good Council, what are the alternatives to that? Are, are you thinking that maybe we could cluster? With Our Lady of Good Council. The parish would remain intact, uh, but, but the parish in effect still stays in existence. Are there other parishes maybe within the area that are better fits? So, so that's really helpful to us. Just saying we don't like what's there doesn't really help us. We're, we're still going to have to figure this out, but if you, if you can be more specific at this point about. Uh, you know, who you might feel comfortable working with, that would be very, very helpful.
I have a suggestion for you, Mark. A very long time ago, this was written down. Uh, this guy sent out, I think, seventy-two disciples, and he told them, don't take any money. When you get to a house, stay there, eat what they serve you. If they don't want to accept you. Shake the dust off and walk out. He didn't have any plans like you have about. The number of people that belong, have to be families. In other words, I guess you're not including apartments. But I don't, I don't, I just have lost this thing, even the report that I read you guys put out. There were so many non-Christian principles presented there that I thought this can't be true. Do you understand what I'm saying? The, the, the guideline for how we make up a parish is not determined by what you said so far.
Dawn, I hear you. I hear you loud and clear.
The, the, the geography, the, uh, historical perspective you propose, I mean, if we only had ten people. That were actually looking to improve themselves and improve their religious experience, that would be reason enough to keep it open. Wouldn't it?
Um, no, it wouldn't. Um, the, the reality is the church is incarnate. Which means that we live in, in the world, and so we have to, we have to respond in that way. In some countries around the world, churches are funded by the government, and they don't even rely on contributions from parishioners. But that's not the way because of the separation of church and state in the United States that we function. So, um, one of the responsibilities of a bishop who has to shepherd a diocese. Is he has to make certain that parishes are financially sustainable. But we're also very much concerned when you read through the plan and you read through the, the, the previous document on key findings. Um, we're also concerned about carrying out the mission fully and effectively. Um, i- if you look at some of the data, for example, of parishes, uh, within the deaneries. The, the number of children who are in religious education is extremely small. Um, th- there, there are very few youth adolescents who are involved in any kind of youth ministry. And one of the struggles that parishes have is they simply don't have the resources to be able to provide staff. So, um, the whole principle of Catholicism is based on sharing. The idea of a parish being an entity unto itself is not really Catholic. Um, that we are called to help sustain one another, and so that's what is really built into the plan.
Biggest thing I'd argue with is when you said, Jesus told these guys, don't take any money with you, take only one cloak.
Yeah, John.
Now, why, why, why can't you see that? You asked those people at your meeting, this panel that you have set up. To explain that passage from scripture to you, and then tell me where you stack up against that.
Okay, John, I hear you loud and clear. The difference.
I won't say nothing else for the rest of the day.
The, 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 um, difference, John, is that the, the consulting team is doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that's looking at it from data. And, and all of us are looking at it in a way that we should be looking at it, and that is from a very personal deep perspective. I don't believe for a second that we can blame this problem on separation of church and state. I don't believe that for a second. That has nothing to do with it. What this is missing, though, guys, is the impact size does not mean community impact. The, the presence of Guardian Angels has a much bigger impact on the community than the surrounding parishes, and they're going to be like, well, you can do that ministry. Out of any other parish, so they will tell us that we can certainly continue to deliver holy communion to, to. Uh, residents at Bishop Spencer Place from any parish, but the reality of that is, is that we do it, even though it's outside of our parish boundaries. Because no other parish wants to go in there. That's the reality of the impact that Guardian Angels has. Mark asked about alternatives. I think Father Ed put forth a brilliant set of alternatives. Saint James is much better aligned to mesh with us. Culturally, uh, than, than, uh, than, than Our Lady of Good Council. I think that's a beautiful pairing, actually. The more I think about it, the more I like it. It's a straight shot down Thirty-Ninth Street. It's pretty great. Um, I can think of plenty of ways that the diocese can save money without closing parishes that, that would. Impact way fewer people. For example, why are we still using Word documents at the diocese? So an alternative I would put forward is to stop paying for Outlook licenses and Word Microsoft Office licenses, which cost the diocese. I imagine tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, and put people onto the Google platform. Use Google Docs. If they don't like it, tough. Word is old-fashioned. Get with it and get on Google Docs. And save a fortune. Stop paying for these massive licensing fees. That's one example of tons of things that we can do. And, and, and that we can put forward to. tons of things that we can do and 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 that we can put forward to Mark so that he can take that back to the diocese. Let's check the chat. We've got everybody loves what you said, Veronica. We've got great, great steps or great, great feedback about that. Doc said we have about eleven minutes left, and that was a minute ago, so. I'm fine to keep going. Yes.
I'd like to know if there what what's the historical success rate of sistering parishes, combining parishes? Has that ever been studied? As far as fall off rate to the like, for instance, I'm concerned that parishioners and guardian angels will not will stop part stop participating once they're not a discreet autonomous parish anymore. Has that ever been studied? I guess that's a question from Mark or anybody else.
The if if you look at the number of parishes that existed in the United States in nineteen seventy five. Since that time, fifty percent of all the parishes in nineteen seventy five have merged with other parishes or are now sharing a pastor or have someone who is referred to in the title in your diocese as a pastoral administrator. Someone like Deacon Tyrone at Our Lady of Sorrows. So half of the parishes now in the United States have experienced a merger, are clustered with another parish and or are being served by someone who is not ordained, a deacon or a woman religious or a layperson. And the probably one of the biggest factors from the research that the Center for Applied Research in the Apostolate has found out is that the more participation that there is, such as what we're trying to do by asking you, who do you think would make more sense for you to be working with? Those tend to be pretty effective in keeping all the parishioners intact. So. So that's, I I mean, that's basically what we know. And that that isn't even taking into account the same type of phenomena is happening in other parts of the world as well. So we're we're not alone in this. So.
Mark, that was a great answer to that. And it makes me think of a follow up. So how frequently do you guys actually make recommendations based on parish culture? Because that, I think, is what really George hit the nail on the head. I will not go to Our Lady of Good Counsel. I've been, it's not for me. It's not for me. I'll have to find a new home. I I so I'd like to see how often, I'd like to hear how often you actually do consider the the cultures of churches. Also, Guardian Angels has proven, as you've heard, that the pastoral administrator model works really well for our parish. And we don't need to revisit why, but we all know that. Everybody here knows that it worked extremely well. So why is that something that the diocese seems to have steered away from in recent years? And why is that not an option on the table now as we struggle with a priest shortage?
Well, let me quickly respond. Obviously, you can't force people to work together. There has to be a willingness to work together. And and so that's why it's so important, and that's why we're asking as we move forward, basically, do these relationships between parishes make sense or don't they? And so they would be doomed to failure if we put parishes together that simply could not get along. The bishop is very open. We've talked about the the potential for pastoral administrators. He has appointed them. And certainly, he has indicated that if if needed, he will continue to appoint them. So.
One of the things that we had when, excuse me, I was the pastoral administrator, was a group that would meet together and kind of interview people who were interested in that position. And that kind of fell apart when Bishop Finn came. But we would, two, three, four times a year, people would be polled. People in in ministry would be polled to see if anybody would be interested in that position. And I think that would be something that maybe could be looked at again.
Let me just say that this this proposal is really I mean.
Before somebody else talks, Jim, just a second. Noella's been very patiently raising her hand. So let's get to Noella and then Jim, we'll get to you.
I would just like to say to Mark and everyone that the St. James pairing definitely is a better match culturally. And I think we cannot underestimate the power of cultural the the whole culture piece. I think that I've been to St. James a number of times. I've been to the Fish Church, as it's called. But I would say that the last match for us in the whole diocese would be Our Lady of Good Counsel. It is the worst match. And I've been there. I I spent a period of my time ideologically on that end of the spectrum, and I was okay with it then. I am not ideologically with that group, and I think it would be extremely divisive for the people in that parish now and in ours. We it would majorly blow up if you put those two together. I know that's very emotional right now, but I want to say that. I think it's, I've heard it said by so many people who are not saying it out loud to a group or to this committee. It would be a very poor match. St. James is beautiful. I've been there. I've been to the the cultural baptisms there with everyone in native garb. It is beautiful, and they are much like us in that. And I think they have suffered because of the pandemic. I know a number of people in St. James, and it will come back when the pandemic situation improves. And it would be a beautiful match for us.
Noella, thank you. That was very well put. Guys, this is safe space. Feel free to be emotional. It's okay to stay on topic. That was a perfect example of a statement that's on topic. And I'm sitting here smiling because I'm imagining the impact that two social justice-driven parishes could have in a community that has gaps to be filled. Could you imagine the pairing of St. James as our sister parish and Guardian Angels as the mother parish, the absolute force that we would be in Midtown? It would be unrivaled. It would make the people at visitation pay attention. That's what it would do. And and we would get, I mean, back to the the time and talent surveys, guys, the Social Justice Committee has been for a while. It has been defunct for a while. I probably had seven or eight people, and I've already thought of one person who I think would be perfect at heading up a revitalized Social Justice Committee. So I've got Jim next. I know real quick, we're running tight on time, but I'm willing to stay longer and take notes. If if people have to, and Mark, I hope you hang out a little bit longer if you can. I understand that people have to go, but we will fill you in. But I'm willing to stay as long as people want to talk. We've got, we've got resources to do it. So.
Jim, yeah.
Hey, Jim, you're trying to talk, but it's not picking up.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go. That's a lot better.
Okay.
Jim, I, Jim, I hate to interrupt you, but we we've got really poor audio audio quality. And and people are telling me that they can't hear you, and I'm sorry. But type your comments in chat, please. Type your comments in chat, and I'm sorry that nobody can hear you, though.
Okay, how about now?
That's a little bit better. Start over.
Okay, just let me say this real quickly. It's like, it's almost like a consultant drew a circle around the two parishes that were closest together without any idea as to what they are about, how they conduct their services, how they worship, or what their philosophies are. It's just like, oh, they're they're close by. They're fine. We'll throw them together. And if we do merge with Our Lady of Good Counsel, you mark my words, they're going to call all the shots. Guardian Angels' voice will be lost, and it will lead to our parish closing once and for good. I mean, you just, I I know it'll happen. And so I I just ask you to be to be considerate, to take our point of view into consideration. And anything like a merger with St. James makes a heck of a lot more sense than Our Lady of Good Counsel. Because it's just not going to work. It's just not, flat out.
Jim, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else? Just start talking. Like I said, we'll stay as long as we need to. I know some people might have to leave. But I want to hear from everyone who wants to be heard.
Uh, yes, uh, John, I think what I hear before and against the Our Lady of Good Counsel and or against them enforcing James. Can anybody be more specific as to what what what's your objection to to Our Lady of Good Counsel? And why why do you like St. James so much? Yes.
Who wants to? I I think that, Noella, are you trying to answer that question?
Yeah, Noella, go ahead.
Noella, you're muted.
Yeah.
Um, Rich, I'd say go one week. Just go one week to Good Counsel. I'd encourage you to do that. Go one time to Good Counsel. Go one time to St. James. Or the next time you and I see each other, I will tell you many stories about both from my perspective. The other thing I wanted to add is my husband and I obviously have a lot of history. We're very old. We have a lot of history with this diocese. I was a religious in this diocese. My husband was a priest in this diocese. He ran the Blue Hills Homes Association. He marched in Selma. We know the history of this diocese, and we know the culture of the diocese. He's been away from it for some time. But we have a perspective that is very important, as John Shealy's is, the history. I know it's the up and comers, the people in the parish who know technology, who are going to move us forward. But our history needs to at least be heard a bit more. And and I'm talking again about the culture. The church as a whole, what we're hearing today from Pope Benedict, everything, the church as a whole. Why there are no young people in the parish? Why is there no one in CCD classes? I have a family. My kids stopped going. I know all of that. I know it intimately. We need to hear what's going on in the church as a whole. Yes, Guardian Angels, but the church as a whole. And it's much like, unfortunately, the political scene. We are polarizing badly. And we we're suffering already. The polarization is just going to drop us in a deep hole. There will be no Catholic Church if we merge and do things like merge Guardian Angels with Our Lady of Good Counsel. It's the stupidest thing I've ever heard for the future of our church, not just our diocese.
Thank you, Noella.
Thank you, Richard, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Good, thank you.
I think we also need some time to figure out some creative ways of how to be church in twenty twenty two. How can we work together with different other parishes if that's what's looked for? And how can ministries, you know, be developed? I noticed one thing they mentioned was that perpetual, Our Lady Perpetual Health would kind of be the center for the social outreach things, which I think is probably a good idea. But we haven't, we've worked with them in the past little bits here and there, done some drives and Socket to Poverty things and stuff like that. But there's probably a lot of different ways that we can brainstorm, come up with ways of coming together rather than just saying that we can't do this and we can't do that. You know, what are the possibilities? How can we be creative in what we're planning?
I think it's an important time to point out that we have been faced with what seems to be a contradictory set of congregations in the past. And that is when the ordinary community came. I I think that we were expecting one thing and and happily got something quite better than I think we were ever hoping for. That's a different ballgame, though. That's that's a small community. We welcomed them in. There was, of course, some hesitation, like anytime there's a change. But it's it's slowly but surely turning into one family. But the difference, and Noella said this very eloquently, is that the the absolute difference, even though we're so close, I mean, you can you can see one from the other if you're standing in the right spot, I swear it. You can see that the the gold, the green domes, they the 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 absolute difference is that their entire parish is structured around a very specific worship style that does not allow for some of the activities that that we do as a parish and things that we like. It's it's just too different. It's too different. It's not that we can't work with them. Push to shove, would we? Would we lose people? Yes. Would they? Probably not. St. James, though, is the better option, and that's what's important here, is that there's a better option. And that's what we're trying to put forth. Yes, Noella.
Up the choir from St. Monica's over one Sunday to join our choir. It was fabulous. It's amazing. We all went downstairs and had coffee. We had a wonderful time. And those women that sat at our round table after the mass said, let's do this again. Let's do this again. And there's never another mention about it. But joining two choirs one Sunday could do a multitude of goo of good. And St. Monica's was amazing.
Shealy, you're waving at me. Do you have something to add? I guess not. Anybody else? I'm looking around. Okay, well, guys, I think we've given a pretty uniform, consistent response to Mark. And I I want to thank Mark for staying late and hearing us. And I want to thank the office staff who was here, Doc and Lori Jo and Father Ed for staying late. I know that they've all had a long day. Father's going to lead us in a closing prayer. We're going to use all of these comments to put together the information in a cohesive way to send to Mark. I want to talk briefly about next steps and then we'll wrap it up. So here's what we can expect over the next several months. The plan will be revised. There's no doubt about it. That's in plain language. Our suggestions and recommendations are going to be considered. Pastors and pastoral administrators and the area planning committee are all going to have the opportunity to provide input into the next draft. This is not a final draft. It's the first draft. The parish reps will continue to work on the development. That's something that I'm not a part of. I'm just the the special engagement committee. There will be two more communications between now and finalization that we can expect from the dia from the diocese. Two more between now and finalization. The final plan will be approved by Bishop Johnston and will be rolled out on May nineteenth, twenty twenty two. It will be livestreamed so that we can watch. And we will know everything at that point, but we will not relent on our mission right now, which is to keep us open and to make a better pairing or find some other alternative. Everyone, thank you so much. Please continue to do those four things. Pray, share, volunteer and give. Spread the word. Get people in the doors. Pray for the success of the study and our parish. And Father Ed's going to lead us in a closing prayer before we adjourn.
Thank you so much, John Kenny, and for all of you who contributed tonight or here, who have been praying about this and you guys are marvelous. You're wonderful. I can't tell you how proud I am of each of you and how much I love to be a part of this parish. You know, one of the things that most people don't realize about priests is that I'm not just pastorally responsible for you who come to Guardian Angels, but to everyone who lives within our parish boundaries. If we all take that responsibility seriously, reach out to our neighbors and let them know that the Catholic Church is the best thing going on the planet. Then we won't find ourselves in this. then we won't find ourselves in this type of situation. So please, everyone, love your neighbors so much that they beg you to bring them to church. All right, I'm sorry, I get emotional. All right.
All right.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for your people who are here, for your blessing upon each of them. Fill them with your grace, with your mercy. Bring provision into their lives. Bring healing into their bodies. Bring inspiration into, into their souls. You be glorified by your community, by your body here at Guardian Angels and throughout the world. Let's pray. I seek the intercession of our blessed mother and pray together. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. O, and Mary, Mother of God, pray for us, enters now and at the hour of our death. Amen. God bless you all.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Thanks, John Kenny, for facilitating. Good job.
See how it goes. All right, bye, guys.